We would like to welcome everyone to today's Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, June 30th of 2020. And again, we're, we're still learning and adapting to our technology here. So we'll get it. First on our agenda today is Clark Schloss, our Jackson County engineer. Morning, Clark.
Okay, basically, there is nothing on the agenda. No miscellaneous item. I'd just like to take a couple of moments to thank, you know, past and current staff members and organizations that have been great help to me in the secondary roads over the last 26 years. When I first came, Paul Wade, Maristy Hayes, Butch Henchen, Dale Johnson, Denny Peistrom, Jack Willison, Rocco Rudd, Bill Schweitzer, and the current staff, Roger Reuler, New Seaborn, Rick Hilber, Ron Cosell, Dave Newman, Stacy Agnitch, and Mike Claus, and the rest of the current staff and the two members mentioned here at this time. I'd also like to thank my fellow county engineers, the County Engineers Service Bureau, the County Preparing Association, Asphalt Preparing Association, Iowa State University, Thor's College, Iowa DOT District Six, and Iowa DOT Systems Office. Over the past 26 years, the staff and engineer have worked hard to maintain and improve secondary roads. If you look over the record, in the last 26 years, numerous roads and bridges have been replaced, made or rebuilt. The entire secondary road staff has done an exceptional job with the financial resources we were given when this court began. I wish the current staff and the court may get lucky in the future, and I'll be watching with great interest to see what happens. And once again, I'd like to thank the people and organizations that I just mentioned. And thank you all.
Appreciate that, Clark. We appreciate your years of service to the, to the county, and we hope you enjoy your company.
Oh, yeah, there's stuff to do, places to see.
Yeah, have some fun.
Grandchildren or grandchild spoil.
Yeah, spend some time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa?
I actually have quite a bit of stuff this morning.
Shonda's not on.
This is, you know, happy, happy new year. This is, today is the end of our fiscal year and beginning our next fiscal year, obviously, is tomorrow. So I have numerous things for board action today. This morning, I'll start with a motion is needed to approve the minutes of the June 23rd, 2020 board proceedings as written by Otter Smith and authorized publication in the official newspapers.
Second. A motion is second to approve the minutes of the June 23rd, 2020 board proceeding as presented. All those in favor say aye. Oppose, nay? Motion carried.
We also need a motion is needed to approve a handwritten warrant to the state of Iowa for $42,597 for the annual FY 2019 audit expense and to Julie Fern for drug grant expense for Spanish language manuals for $275.83. As we were going through and doing our final look of the year, as far as to make sure that we've done what we said we were going to do, we noticed that we had not paid the state auditors for our audit. And I didn't want to have two audits coming out of next year, so it was a little more than I had anticipated.
Was that the audit that just come yet, like this last week?
So it was a little more than what we anticipated. We're gonna have to revisit that at some point.
Like how much a little more?
Yeah, this is 7,200.
Really? And they?
Any explanation as to why?
There is. I mean, they basically told in the, in the explanation, it said that it's for additional expenses incurred to, to do this and to do this and to do this. One of the things that I know that they looked at was, we did have an issue which has since been corrected as far as the conservation online account fund. And so we've got that taken care of and up and running. So that was one of the expenses, and I know approval was another, it's a receivable or something.
I was under the understanding, when we talked about this last time, that a lot of us are gonna be down remotely at their site, so they don't have to be here as much. So expenses like overnight expenses were gonna be less.
It could have been a lot more than what it was.
So I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we'll have to make sure that auditors are on the.
Yes. So I do need a motion to approve of this.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the handwritten warrants as, as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye, oppose, nay? Motion carried.
Then I did give you a copy of all of these resolutions. The first resolution that I need you to approve by motion is resolution number 748-0630-2020. This is for the fiscal year 2021 appropriations by the department.
So moved, the second.
Motion is second to approve resolution 748-06-30-2020 as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Motion carried.
Motion needed to approve resolution number 749-0630-2020, naming county officers' bank depositors for fiscal year 2021 for the recorder and sheriff designated banks to deposit revenue from their trusts.
So moved, second.
Motion is sec- to approve resolution 749-06-30-2020 as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Motion carried.
Motion needed to approve resolution number 750-0630-2020, naming Jackson County Bank depositories for fiscal year 2021, the financial institution to be depositories for funds collected in the county treasury.
So moved, the second.
Motion is second to approve resolution 750-06-30-2020. And nothing has really changed from them, institutions, correct? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Motion carried.
Motion needed to approve resolution number 751-0630-2020 for designation of county bank for fiscal year 2021, designating Macau to state bank for county warrants and payroll warrants.
So moved, second.
Motion is second to approve resolution number 751-06-30-2020 as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Motion carried.
Motion needed to approve resolution number 752-0630-2020 for issuing county warrants and allowing the auditor to issue warrants without the prior approval of the board for payment on freight, postage, express, payrolls, water, lights, telephone, contractual services, witness fees, school of instruction registration fees, and mileage.
So moved, second.
Motion is second to approve resolution 752-06-30-2020. And again, nothing has changed or out of normal there. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, nay? Motion carried.
Motion needed to approve number 753-0630-2020 for inter-fund operating transfers, authorizing the auditor to periodically transfer sums from the general basic and rural services basic funds to the secondary roads fund during the 2021 budget year.
So moved, second.
Motion and a second to approve resolution 753-06-30-2020 as presented for inter-operating transfers. All those in favor say aye. Oppose, nay? Motion carried.
Motion needed to approve resolution number 754-0630-2020 for township officials reimbursing with a compensation rate of $20 per meeting and for clerk's paperwork of $20 per month, not to exceed $240 per year.
So moved, second.
Motion is second to approve resolution 754-06-30-2020 as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye, oppose, nay? Motion carried.
Motion needed to approve resolution number 755-0630-2020 for payroll for fiscal year 2021 and authorized publication in the official newspapers.
So moved, second.
Motion is second to approve resolution number 755-06-30-2020 for payroll for fiscal year 2021 as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, nay? Motion carried.
I also need a motion this morning needed to rescind resolution number 544-0125-2011 prohibiting firearms or dangerous weapons on county property due to Governor Reynolds signing House File 2502, creating subsection four to Iowa Code Section 724-28.
So what does that say?
Just to give you a little background. So we've been watching this bill throughout this legislative session. And when Sarah and I have been talking about this bill and Governor Reynolds did sign the bill, I do have a copy of it. I have a copy of the resolution. But basically what she did, and we still could have this in place, but what we do not have is that we do not have one point of entry and a metal detector or anything like that. So if, if we had that, then that could stay up. But since we don't have that, then we cannot no longer say that people cannot bring firearms into the courthouse. So I have already directed Marty, and it is already done, all of the signs effective tomorrow, but a lot of those in effect that tomorrow citizens can bring firearms into the courthouse. Resolution that was done back in January 25th of 2011 basically said that they were not allowed, but by the governor signing this bill into law, we now have to allow it.
Unless we have a metal detector.
Correct.
Can we get one today?
We have one.
We have one over there, don't we?
I have one real quick. We just bought a new one.
So part of subsection four, and let me read this. It says, "A political subsection of a state may restrict the carrying, possession, or transportation firearms or other dangerous weapons in the buildings or physical structures located on property under the political subdivision's control if adequate arrangements are made by the political subdivision to screen persons for firearms or other dangerous weapons." And the political subdivision provides armed security personnel inside the building or physical structure where the restriction is to be in effect. So the only way for us to do this is if we have one point of entry. And as it says here, screening persons for firearms or other dangerous weapons.
So does that just mean a metal detector? Screening someone? Does that just mean, do I have to walk through a metal detector?
Screening persons for firearms or other dangerous weapons. I don't know.
Is that a pat down, you mean, or is that a?
Well, I think if we can put that metal detector there, and when it goes off, then he could walk up and say, okay, what are you carrying?
Well, that's gonna go off all the time. We're gonna have to have somebody there, let's take the change out of their pocket, their belt buckle off, and the car keys. Medical condition.
Honestly, I did not want this to be an issue tomorrow. That's why I'm bringing this to the board today. There are citizens in Jackson County and throughout the state here that believe that they have that right to carry a firearm. And that's why I said, we've been watching this bill, you know, work its way through the legislation, and she signed it.
Is this concealed carry or open carry?
I don't know. I.
Kinda either.
Yeah, carry.
So they can come walking in here with their guns on. They want very, very.
I just think it's ridiculous. Bullish mistake.
I don't recall that one going through.
I don't remember hearing it come up.
Reading about it. I, I mean, Isaac sure did weigh in on it very much, because I read all them when they, you know, there's different bills that come up. When did that one pass?
So this was the letter, well, you know, here's the letter from the governor's office. This came from Kim, Kim Reynolds to Secretary of State Paul P. It says, "I hereby transmit House File 2502 in act relating to firearms and weapons, including the storage, carrying, possession, or transportation of weapons and the establishment, use, and maintenance of shooting ranges. The above House file is hereby approved on this date, and it was signed June 25th, 2020."
Okay, well, so.
Let's have Brad come up once.
Um, I didn't see Brad this morning, but we should have Sarah come down, yeah.
Sarah. I mean, if there's a way that we can move that up there, even if it's not turned on, just that we have it here and see if we have that capability.
Because right now, we just do have one point of entry, don't we?
For citizens, for citizens to do business in the building. Yeah.
All the loudspeakers.
That's what she was.
I don't know that we have any choice at this point. Let's see if we can do something going forward.
All right. Okay, thanks. I just didn't want this to be an issue. Let me go see if I can find her.
What, what do you mean by an issue?
I know that if people, if people understand that, that this law has passed and knowing that I have already been contacted, not recently, but in the past, about carrying firearms in the courthouse, someone may come in and.
Challenge it.
Correct.
They may come with their firearm.
You know, I had one person come up and says, well, I should be allowed to carry my gun. And I says, if you don't feel safe in our courthouse, we will have our guard come up and escort you so the ladies don't hurt you or whatever business you need to attend, but we will take good care of you, so you don't have to carry your gun in the courthouse. He's like.
It's just so, it's just the point. That's all the thing. I don't think there's a danger to.
So they, so Iowa law is already, you know, signed by the governor. I just, I did remove those signs because.
So it went into effect tomorrow.
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 I'm not sure if it, you know, reading that, I wonder if it went into effect on June 25th.
I think all new laws.
I didn't read the backside of that.
Some of them do go into effect on signing.
Correct. Yeah, I, I don't know. And then Sarah felt, she didn't, it's kind of a, Sarah did not know about our resolution that we passed in 2011. I said, yes, we.
Here it says July 1st, 2020.
Yeah. And I said, yes, I do remember that. I don't know what, I don't remember why, but I do remember that, that the resolution was passed in January of 2011.
That they couldn't carry in here.
They could not.
Right.
And I know that we did have several people come in shortly after that and felt that, that us taking the stand on this resolution is not correct. So signs were removed at Pennos. They were removed here at courthouse. She's on the phone, so Rosie will let her know when she's up the phone, if you want to talk to her. We certainly can.
Is there anything else you have?
That is the last item that I have that I need.
We certainly can come back to it, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Well, let's table it. Until we can talk to Sarah a little bit. What, what is this?
This is the, you asked me to send this email on top to the, to the other two, and the rest of it is John Hanson's answers to Brent Fulbert's questions.
And we need them right now?
No, no.
We have a break.
We are. Is Shonda here on? Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak or comment at this time? Arlene, are you available? Luann, are you available?
Whichever one you want.
Arlene is scheduled at 9:40, so we'll see if our, if Shonda pops on here too.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right, the schedule is a little thin this week because it's a short week, which is always nice. At 6 o'clock tonight, we do have the Operation New View 28E partners meeting. This is a meeting to talk about the merger with HECAM. Courthouse will be closed on Friday, July 3rd for the Independence Day holiday. And our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, July 7th at 9:00 a.m. I have.
Just meeting this evening, is that for all of us?
That's for all of you, even Lisa, if she wants to be listening in on this.
It's the final one of how much money we owe to get out of this.
I don't know if they know that yet.
Not quite.
There's someone that was postponed here a while back. We talked about it, had it all set up, so.
That's been a long process.
Yes.
Yes. Do both of you plan to attend? Or I might have to change my schedule, because I have another commitment, but.
I think they wanted everybody.
Basically, it's just to explain what's gonna happen.
Right.
And we can fill you in.
We'll be well represented, and there'll be minutes and.
Both of us are on the executive boards.
Oh, well, yeah, that's right. You guys went through all that. Okay.
We both agree that might could be.
All right, business this morning. The term of one of our Veterans Affairs commissioners expires today. That's Roger Schnorr. I did advertise three months ago for his position to see if we can get any women to apply for that position, because that board doesn't need gender balance. I got no applications whatsoever. So since Roger is willing to be reappointed, I'm looking for the board to reappoint Roger to the Veterans Affairs Commission.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to reapprove Roger Schnorr on the Veterans for Veterans Affairs Commission Board. My question is, Roger been contacted and is willing to serve?
Yes. Debbie, I talked to Debbie and she talked.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, nay? Motion carried. I wonder going forward, do we, do you think we need to, like, other boards and commissions where we get no responses for them? Do we need to get into the social media thing? Or put, it's on our website though, correct? Or is it not on our website?
Yes, the public notice that I put out would be, and I think Debbie puts it on the Veterans Affairs Facebook page.
I mean, not just, not, I'm not saying just for Veterans Affairs, but a lot of our boards and commissions we have trouble, unless we personally call someone and try to talk, survey, you know, which we do a lot. You know, we know somebody we think that would fit the, fit the bill, you know?
I'm pretty good at Facebook. We can set up a board of supervisors Facebook page, but that's not all social media.
Right, right.
Of other ones, my kids will tell you that's not the cool one right now, so.
I don't know, I don't call it.
Well, I guess it's never gonna be cool.
Me either, Jack. All right, the rest of the business I have, I have three new fireworks permit applications. One for Zachary Scheib, I think, on Highway 64 for the 4th of July. One for Denise Clark, also on Highway 64, but I think the other direction for August 2nd. And one for Michael Demoss on 92nd Street for the 4th of July. So I'm looking for approval of those three fireworks permits.
August 2nd.
She's ahead of the game.
That's, that's, unless she got the wrong month on it.
I think there's a celebration of some kind. It's her, her ring date is August 8th, so.
Yeah, it is.
So moved, second.
Motion and a second to approve the fireworks permits as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, nay? Motion carried.
And there was one fireworks permit application that came in yesterday afternoon, which was too late to get it on an agenda before the 4th of July, so.
We have to have 24 hours notices.
We need two weeks' notice.
Two weeks' notice.
And she checked with Sarah, and Sarah said we could not.
Right.
So we can offer them another date if they want to try, they want to pick August 2nd or some date in the future, we have time to do a board meeting in between, we can do that. Tried to redact it and let them know that today, so.
Maybe we need to get that out there a little earlier too, so people think about it. I don't know how you.
I think we do advertise it.
We do.
Far enough in advance.
I had one gentleman calling me in April for a fireworks permit for the 4th of July. So.
Well.
There's more this year than we've ever had.
Well, I think you're, you're losing a lot of local little small town fireworks. They're not happening, and people are doing things from home.
Oh, they did, yeah.
I think we're going to Oxford Junction, but it's one of the few that are still.
Yeah, certainly hope that everybody stays safe and.
Now they're concerned because of Davenport canceling, so all the people from, come out there to watch fireworks.
Sure they will.
Yes.
Well, we hope that everybody stays safe and, and are diligent about what they're doing here. They're dangerous, so everybody be careful, please.
Yeah, I remember that sparkler thing, we talked about it on the news last night, 1,200 degrees and things are. I mean, you think about a stove is 300, an oven is 350 degrees, that's 1,200 degrees, and you got a little kid hanging on to it. Those things scare me. I remember getting burnt like that, so I guess. So be careful out there.
Yes, certainly. Is that all yours?
It's all I have.
Well, thank you. You have a good holiday weekend also.
Thank you.
And apparently we did not find Sarah yet. Any other unfinished business? I just want to say that the recycle bins are being delivered today. Bellevue's is gone when I come by this morning, and I got a message from Matt. I talked to Matt this morning, and he said that Ida Crick is gone. And Iron Hill and Preston will be gone today, and the new ones will be in place today. So if there's a short lapse, when there's not one there, don't get excited. There'll be one there today, and that will be, and it's commingle, just a reminder that it's commingle, so you don't have to separate your recycles anymore. Be diligent about it, and don't just set it there. If there's not a bin there today, when, when you get there, please.
I guess I, I just wish the county could find a place where we could have one.
What about the, what about the maintenance shed?
We talked about that, and then it kind of, it kind of.
The county road.
Secondary roads.
Secondary roads down there.
I mean, it'd be another expense to the county, and we have citywide, so I guess you're talking about the outline.
Well, there's a lot of people that live within.
Five miles of the outline.
Miles of Macau that.
Correct.
And some of them are older. It's gonna be a hardship for them to try to find somebody to take it or.
I guess we never had one here, and we never had the citywide recycle.
We had dank.
They went, took it to dank.
They take it down there.
I, I really wish we could find a place in Macau to have one.
Ah. So, yeah, I guess the thing is, if we budget for another bin, no, we did not.
So we only have four budgets. We're paying for five bins, we're budgeting for four.
Right. I know.
Did you decide like how that's going to happen is that they're not going, until we get a schedule?
Until we have a better feel for it. It's gonna be on demand, pretty much. I talked to some of the secondary road guys, and they're willing to check things out and help out and until we get a feel of, you know, if certain weekends are gonna be busy, or if it's once a week, once a week, or twice, twice a month, whatever it may be. He doesn't want to come down when they're at full. And he, and we don't want to, of course, pay for a half full.
How's that waiting for? So the secondary roads employee is going to call who? Tell them maybe call me, okay? And then you're going to call.
We're gonna call you, that was my plan.
Oh, okay.
We're gonna call Dickmar and tell him.
As long as I know that, yes, yes.
Well, I would call direct into that, or just call direct to Scott.
Okay. Okay. We'll ask him how he wants us to contact him in that case.
And I think the way it's set up right now, because Preston and Bellevue are the busiest, I think we thought we would try once a week and see how, just once a week. They were both twice a week, where Bellevue was twice a week prior, and Preston was one extra pickup a month, if I remember right. So, and that could change in Preston also, because they're gonna have curbside, which they're taking to Clint. So we may not have people from the city bringing their recycles out to Preston's.
Right.
So it's a, it's a wait and see, pretty much. You know, we're running on a new program here.
And the bins are so much bigger too, so.
Four times the size.
Four times the size.
And you can commingle. So it's like the bin in Bellevue, for instance. I mean, your paper cardboard, it, it would be overflowing in three days. Now your tin would not. So if you have that extra space in there, it may, it may be a little.
So basically, you can take a cardboard box and put your tin stuff in it, throw the whole thing in.
Absolutely.
How about over the.
Oh, hustle, put it in the parking lot, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Lisa, you okay with that?
There's a little green space out in front.
Well, let's see, I, I guess we can, we can check into it and we can see down secondary roads, maybe if there's room or, 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 I don't know, we had talked about that, you know, even. We talked about the parking lot of Tysons or something.
There would be somebody there, it would be a controlled area, just don't be locking up.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it would only be.
They're open during business hours.
But at least it's, it would be an option.
But they're never open on Saturday.
And don't take this wrong, the liability may be too great.
I like, I mean, I, huh?
Just so everyone knows also, they are going to have a bin at Waste Authority out at the landfill. Transfer station, I should say.
That's still ten, ten, twelve.
Oh, yeah, I agree. I mean, I mean, you can take it to Baldwin, but that's not going to resolve the issues here around McCoke. You know, we have a shed obviously involved. And you said one of the transfer stations recyclables not makes like the other ones you're talking about.
Absolutely not. That's, it's co-mangled, it's for just recyclables, but it's co-mangled. Same, same type of bin that we, our new ones are, they got one, they are renting one and paying for one from their, just like we are.
That's nice.
I mean, again, we have bins. Okay. Sarah. Are you, there you go, whoops.
You're on.
So we have some questions on the new House File twenty-five oh two.
Okay, what's the question?
Is there anything that we can do at this level in our situation to not allow them in the courthouse?
If you want to put up a metal detector at the door and have everyone screened, I think that's the only way.
Give me the definition of screening. Is that a pat down or you just have to wash with a metal detector or it just has to be there? There's a fine line there, the way it sounds to me.
Well, it doesn't specifically say what adequate screening is. I would say that whatever your screening is, it has to apply to everyone. So whether it's using the wand, using a metal detector or patting everybody down, you're going to have to have somebody there all the time to do it so that it's, you know. The point is, is that the way I see it, if we are not going to make sure that people are not bringing in weapons, then the legislature wants to allow the general population to protect themselves by bringing in their own weapons. If somebody who's not going to follow the law brings in a weapon, then the law-abiding citizen should be allowed to protect themselves.
So does that also mean any other public places, restaurants?
This applies only to political subdivisions, or, yeah, political subdivisions, so counties, cities.
Okay. So basically you're telling us that we, our situation, so let's say City Hall is in the same situation.
That's the way I read it.
Well, it sounds like we don't have a choice.
Yeah.
Your only choice is if you want to put out. Well, if we want to do that and hire another individual to do security.
Well, like I say, with the screening, the screening processes, yeah, if it's, if they have to walk through a metal detector and it goes off and then you, then you ask them a question or, you know, it's going to be a process. How many you think we're going to get, you know?
You have problems with vacation and lunches.
I get it, but we, we've got, we have, you know, other individuals that fill in, but.
Yes.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't, how many people are going to walk in here with a weapon up? If they're just trying to make, maybe just trying to make a point, or do you carry it all the time or now, now that you can, you're going to do it?
Well, the idea of having a whole room full of people in here, almost yelling at each other, that's intense. And to know that they can actually have their guns with them while this is going on, that's the scariest situation.
Yes, and everybody that comes to the courthouse is happy.
Right. Or missing, or even informed, I mean, that, what they're yelling about. It's like, where'd that come from? Now, you know, they make up shit and then they tell somebody else and then before long they've got this whole scenario about whatever we've done, that we don't have a clue what's going on and how do you tone that down?
Well, we'll have to lobby your next time around. I mean, I'm sure it's going to get some attention. I, I seriously do not recall reading about this file. I'm sure that, oh, yeah.
You have to remember, I mean, Scott County, Clinton County, their admin building is separate from their courthouse, so they're in the same situation because their admin buildings do not have metal detectors. So what are they planning to do? That'll, you know, I mean, it's going to be interesting.
Well, like Dubuque has it all set up for everybody that goes in the courthouse.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But their assets office is in a different building and I doubt they have metal detectors, so now they're going to be treated kind of different than other county entities.
Yeah, and they're, and they have their annex building out on Sycamore Road. Because they have meetings and stuff out there in their fancy big blue room they put out there. Okay.
Well, we appreciate your input.
You're welcome.
Have a good day.
Thanks, Sarah.
You too.
So we're still on number I. Have a motion and a second to approve Resolution five four four zero one dash two five dash twenty eleven as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay, motion carried.
That's all I have for the board today.
Were you able to get a hold of Shonda? Because they're not in the office.
Email them. They'll be here anytime.
Dave, do you know any status on Shonda?
I just got a text from him because I texted him to say that you guys were waiting for him and he said he can't get in. He, he's tried to connect and he can't get in and I told him to give away a call, so.
He won't be able to reach me. My phone is turned off during the meetings. He has to just call it like a conference call. He has to call it on the phone number.
Can he join by Zoom?
That's what he seems not to be able to connect to. I'm not sure why I was able to connect, but let me.
Phone in on the phone numbers.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, but does he have them?
Oh, yeah.
Well.
Would you like me to give him a call and see what the problem is?
No, what? There he is.
Oh, here he is, here he is. He's connecting now.
Well, good morning, Shonda. Mute, whoops.
He's only half here. It's only half here.
There he is. Shonda. Good morning.
Good morning. I supervise this.
So on our agenda today is Shonda Revada from the ECI Director of Transportation. And he's here to present the RCTP recommendations. They were sent to us this past week and we looked them over. Do we have them all in our packet? No.
The recommendation is the recommendation.
Not, yeah, okay. It's just, yeah, it's just, just the recommendations and of course with the application, there was pictures and from the pictures that we looked at, there was some need. So if you want to go over them, Shonda, would be great.
So supervisors, thank you very much for this opportunity today. So we did send the memo to the county engineer and as well as we did send all the applications to the county engineer. So the applications include everyone who got funded, I mean, everyone who got recommended for funding and people who did not get recommended for funding. So you should have like eight applications with you. So with that, what we did is we went through a ranking committee and ranked, come to rank the projects. So as of now, we got LeMont, Stradwell, and Cebula getting the amounts what they asked. And Bellevue asked for twenty-five thousand, but they're number four in the list and they are left with four thousand four hundred eighty-two dollars. We'll be calling Bellevue to see if they want to have that money. If Bellevue says no, they don't want it, then we'll offer that to Baldwin. Baldwin, on other side, has asked for six thousand one hundred, so we can offer them four thousand four hundred and see if they want to take. If Baldwin don't want to take, we will go to Preston then say in the notice, if no one wants to take that money, we'll leave that money for next year's account. So that's what we are recommending as of now.
Okay, and I'll just say, I looked them over and I thought the, you know, the committee did a good job of scoring them. And of course, along with Bellevue's application, they have received funds in the past, so they lose points for that. If it was last year, so any questions for Shonda?
I don't have any. It's pretty self-explanatory.
Anything else for us, Shonda?
No, we are requesting the supervisors to approve it. Once we get your approval, we'll start writing the contracts and send them out to the communities for the signatures and send it back to you. Now, as of first, we won't have, sorry, gone.
I'm sorry?
So as of now, we said the contract should come to the county engineer, but I know Clark won't be there from July first, so who should they send the contracts to, the signed ones?
Well, send them here.
Send them here.
Todd, Todd Kenny's going to be here on Thursday.
Okay.
So if you send him down, he can sign those Thursday morning.
Okay, we'll ask them to start working on those and get those to you guys by Thursday, if not by next week for sure.
Okay, okay. So we do have an interim engineer. We also have a assistant engineer that has an engineer designation, so I think we're, we're on track and that nothing gets delayed. So.
Perfect, yeah.
We need action on that, that.
Yep. I would still move. Good second.
I got a motion and a second, approve the RCTP recommendations as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay, motion carried.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Shonda. Have a great holiday.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, so I, is Shonda gone? I guess my question is, as long as we approved it as presented and if Bellevue decides not to take that four thousand, because they may want to wait and see if they could get more, more than, yeah. So if they don't receive any this year, they're, they would get more points for next year or so.
And then it might go to Baldwin or.
Yeah, so we can change, change that, okay.
Goodie, goodie. Be ready, guys.
So this truck thing, they're still trying to push that.
Yeah, I seen that, I, I.
Yeah, or whatever.
They're not going to be happy until they get it pushed through.
I don't know who's behind all that, but that's ridiculous.
The truck weight limit, is that what you're like?
Yeah. He's been sending emails and, and I've contacted our legislators, but this is at the upper level. So you'd have to go to Grassley or somebody. I guess Abby's out there. All right, we are joined by Arlene Sharp, our Jackson County Recorder. Good morning.
I just have some pictures for you.
Yeah, that's good.
They are not my drawings. Pictures, yeah. Okay.
Whoa. Are we redoing the building or what?
First we have to read, then we can look at the pictures. Okay, so I think all of us have had a lot of thought and discussion over the past few months. And right now, as you know, we're just working through one slot in our doorway, which does not give us the space that we really need in our office for the rest of our time, so to speak. For one thing, it's, it's hard for us to hear the customers. It's hard for the customers to hear us. So then we're talking loudly, so then when we're on the phone, we can hardly hear the talk on the phone. And for those of you that, you know, don't, don't know exactly what, everything that goes on in our office, for example, when we work with the VNR, as far as even those are vessels, an application has to be filled out that can take fifteen minutes. Right now, we're having the customer fill it out in the hallway, bringing it back to us, up to us. Or they fill it out and they come up two or three times with questions. Whereas if we had a longer counter with protection, we could be standing right there, basically doing a tour of them, okay? And when it comes to vital records, it's the same thing. To get a birth, death, or marriage certificate, first they have to fill out an application, which normally they have questions on how to fill it out. We have to notarize their signatures. Marriage application, you've got party A, party B, and a witness, they have to fill out the application. And again, we have to notarize. It's just so hard to do all that through one little slot in our window. Then, of course, we have the whole passport issue. We have temporarily suspended doing passports because it, you know, it takes Jennifer anywhere from fifteen minutes, forty-five minutes to an hour, depending on how many applications she has at a time, whether it's one single person, a couple, a family. If everything's filled out properly, it can go pretty quickly. Within fifteen minutes, she can finish, but normally it's not that simple. And she has to be right there to verify who they are, to notarize her signature, all that good stuff. Passport, federal passport service is, is starting to reopen because they were shut down for a while too. So we need, we need to start being able to take passports. And in order to do that, again, we have to have something different than what we have because we can't tie that one window up for that amount of time.
So the one picture in here, is that drawn or is this is somewhere?
These are just a couple of pictures.
So what, what we're talking about here, if I'm correct, and not what you're doing in the office, no different than what the treasurer may be doing and, and for their business or service. We're just talking about a protection, correct?
We're talking about protection. And let me just look at, have you look at pictures? These are just three of many of what has come across the desk, but like the first one, for example, they've taken their counter and they've just put a protective wall across the top. And then they have plexiglass or glass and they're working through a slot, okay? The other two, they're just using the glass. One is not quite to the ceiling and the other one, the brackets go to the ceiling, of course.
So we're talking.
Come down to the office, I can kind of show you what we've given this a lot of thought. What can we do least expensive, but yet be able to serve our customers?
So is it something like the treasurer's office has there or something that Lisa has like that?
More like the treasurer's office, but not to that extent, because we don't, we want people, okay, we want people to come in our door like normal. And then our countertop, we would like protective almost all the way up to the ceiling because the airborne question has never been answered as far as I'm concerned. Okay, so we would like people to come in and have that area in front of our counter.
Let's go down there.
Where they stay.
All right, excuse me, the public, we're going to walk down and look at the.
There you go.
Okay, we are back and we're reconvening at this time. Okay, we are back, and we're reconvened at this time. We took a visit down to the recorder's office. And we will discuss further what our options might be.
You know, the thing that we want to look at is, we don't want it to be a huge expense, but yet we want it, at this point, to be permanent.
And the way things look right now is going to be there a long time.
As much as I don't want to shield out the public, I, I think we're all at a time, a time that we have to. And not only would this be for health reasons, it would also be for safety reasons as well. It would cover both. So. The other thing I want to mention is the E-store in our office does not lock. You have to jiggle it to get it to lock and unlock, because it, it just has never worked properly. So I would like to have a key filed at that door, so it's easier to open and shut when you let the abstractors in, the surveyors in, the passport photos, people in.
Can we do that with the panel that we have? We talked about this in the safety meeting. So when, when is our next safety meeting, by the way? So can we discuss that then?
What about this? They want to be able to access our stuff online?
Yeah, no, that's not going to happen. So you pretty much said it's not safe for them to have their own button and do it. So. But we are letting the abstractors in now. It's just we ask them to wear a mask and sanitize before and after. And the standard doesn't move the area.
Well, I guess one of the things I want to know is, I want cost estimate, and I want to know how long it's going to take. Because I, when we talked last week, if Marty does it, then that pulls in the wafer, everything else he does for the count, basically, for that time period of time. And I don't know how long something like this would take to cut the counters, to move them and get that, get the back, plexiglass or whatever we use and build the wall. It's going to take, but it's not something that's going to get done in a day or two.
And the other thing to consider is, just for whatever, in, in my budget, I have a line item for bookbinding that's ten thousand dollars that we've had a few years now, which I really appreciate. But this year, I would, would not use that line item in hopes that, at the end of the fiscal year, that could be used somewhat for what we're going to do, so.
Oh, I like the fact that, yeah, I don't know about the counter thing. I've talked to Marty, but I like the fact that you can't get to that door, the other door.
To lock it or anything, yeah.
And we could have a little gap there. We just, we just didn't think it was totally necessary.
What about leaving the counters where they're at? And going through the doorway there, just put a, put a door in there. I mean, just a regular door and close that off. And then continue down the, the counter and then come back and close it off on the other side, too. Maybe even have a door put in there. So now you're, you're not moving any counters or anything. You're just putting plexiglass window over the counters, temporary door, and another door in the middle part, and then down the rest of it. Then you got more room. The one on the end could be for a passport. Now, passport, they can come down and work on the counter right here, and then this is okay, then we'll open the door, and you take your picture and come back in here. It could be less, less intrusive or whatever, you're just.
So how would you put a door, and then if there's not a wall?
Just a frame, I mean.
Marty said he could put a door there of some sort, I mean, yeah.
They don't have to be a big, heavy door, like, it can be a more of a residential wood door or something.
Certainly price that, I've just, what I've been hearing.
Even like a garage door type situation.
That would be to put protection all the way across two counters.
Because even a garage door style, flat steel with a glass in it is less than a hundred and fifty dollars with the frame and everything. It's prehensile.
Well, that's true.
Yeah, and do them two doors. And we're not moving that counter, you're not cutting the top, and everything at some point in time can just be taken down and be gone.
Are you adamant about this going to the ceiling?
I want it as close to the ceiling as possible. Yes.
Makes it easier to attach.
Well.
Even just kind of hang it from the ceiling, even you've seen pictures of that being done.
We've done walls, or we'll stand them up, we'll make them a half inch or three quarter inch short. Once we stand it up, we just shim it, and that locks it to the floor. So it's friction to that.
But you got a false ceiling up in there, too, yeah, right?
It's just mesh, mesh with.
You've got a plaster ceiling in there.
It's mesh, it's all plastic.
Yeah, that's solid. It would, it would serve the purpose, especially on something.
So usually it's just made out of PVC?
It would need to be more like over here with the two by twos or even two by fours with the bits that are routed out.
We have to look at how much it's going to cost.
Well, this would be, this is, I've just cut about half the price off it off easily by putting them two doors in there.
Yeah, that countertop thing is kind of scary.
Yeah, the countertop and moving the electric on and all that stuff, that's going to end up.
Why are we going to be two doors? Explain that.
Traffic flow, I would say, because if somebody comes in for a passport, they can be down on the end counter and work back and forth there. And then when they need to take the picture, they just go through that other door and hand picture and come back.
So you're really talking only adding one door?
Well, one where the, where you walk through, that would be.
Actually, actually.
Well, that wouldn't, that wouldn't have to be a door, that could just be closed off.
It should probably be one door, because you could actually take the picture right there at that counter behind you. There's a map thing in there now or something, right?
No, because the plexiglass or glass would be there, and we can't take it through plexiglass. We've tried that already. We can't take photos through that.
But you, you think they need another door there to give?
No, really, where you, where you walk through your counter now, that could just be a flat panel, it doesn't need to open. And then do, you know, windows up to that point, flat panel down, or another full, full window if you want. Plexiglass would be just as cheap as anything else. And then plexiglass to the end of it, and turn it back here and put a door in there.
Okay, let's do this. Let's have the contractor and Marty maybe get together with Arlene and talk this over. And maybe we can come up with a concept that everybody likes, and we'll get a cost, because that's, that's a factor.
And part of that, having that door on the end of the counter, is if you're doing a passport and somebody else is working up here, they don't have to pass.
Yeah, if you're willing to do all the way across, that's awesome.
The whole length of that counter.
I just think if you're willing to do all the way across, that's why I was suggesting just tell them that.
You mean from all the way down, from one to the, just the whole countertop?
Which is, is, will be good for the customers, because then they can be sixty apart or whatever.
So when they come through the second door, if there's a second door, they can come down to take their picture. You still don't have protection there, then?
At the picture, no, but that's going to be a quick thing. It's not going to be fifteen minutes or more.
All right, let's, i- if you're willing to do that, Larry, get together with Marty and talk it over, and then we'll see if we can come to an agreement and what a cost might be, and then we'll go from there. In the meantime, are you okay with what you're doing?
Well, yes. And again, we're just still going to have to suspend doing passports. We just can't do it, which right now, most people are not going to want to travel anyway, so.
Okay.
So, yes.
All right, well, we appreciate it. And we sure will try to keep you safe.
After the meeting.
Sure.
I don't know if Marty's around, but he's. You're sure you can find him?
No, if you can find him.
He's pretty good about that, he might be.
That's the problem. He knows who's calling, that's why he doesn't answer.
That's, he'd answer for that.
I appreciate you understanding the fact that we need protection and the fact that we can't continue through one more answer. Thank you.
Yeah, and this is an ongoing thing. I mean, this can go on for another year, could be. I mean, there's really no end in sight.
And honestly, I, I can't anticipate taking it down.
Yeah.
Because we're, we're not talking through the hallway, which means we'll be able to hear each other. So it's a safety precaution as well.
Yeah.
Protection, yeah.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Arlene.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, any other unfinished business before the board this morning? Or any board or commission reports that you'd like to put out there? I guess I have, this past weekend, we were out and about some. And I can, I just want to say to our residents, our local residents, I got to tell you that they're doing a great job with these road ditches and Noxious Sweet. They are, yeah, I mean, you go north up there and there's, people are giving it that, I, I appreciate that, you know, it says in our Noxious Sweet ordinance that they're responsible to mow the grass from the right away to the fence line. And boy, there's a lot of them doing it, and it really looks nice. You know, you ain't got the brush growing up, and we do appreciate that, so.
Only one I noticed that needs mowed is the new highway that's on the Iron Bridge.
I come up that one yesterday. Is it, is it, you mean back to the fences, you mean?
Up, just, I mean, right up to the road, it's not mowed at all.
I, I don't know where the, where secondary.
Unless they did since. It's been two, two or three days since we've been down there.
Yeah, and I don't, they couldn't get on that for about a month either, that was the thing.
That's probably, yeah.
Yeah, you know, they couldn't get on that, they were working on it, they couldn't, yeah, they were grinding, and then they were.
That highway, that highway is really nice though.
Yeah, I wouldn't, yeah, go ahead and say something.
Oh, we went down to the restaurant in Spragueville.
Marley and me, yeah.
Marley and, yeah, very good. And then from there, we came back.
No, that makes a nice road, that's for sure.
Me and Marley's.
Marley and me. So, yeah, just mentioned something to Mike or call Roger and see if there's, if you notice it hasn't been done yet. I can look on the way home, too, so. Any other reports or commissions?
Well, we had a couple of meetings with workforce.
A couple?
Well, this week, we had one yesterday morning and one yesterday evening, or late afternoon. And another one on Thursday. We're still dealing with Southeast Community College about the Title I Youth Program. They've indicated that they would not sign the contract as, as it is written. And so Jim Miller, who was an attorney, James Miller, who was an attorney in the Burlington area, is working with Miranda and the CEOs to see if we can come up with some responses to their concerns. And supposed to get that sometime today. Miranda said she would send it up here for my signature. We've given Southeast Community College till four o'clock on Thursday to respond. And if they don't actually, no, it's four o'clock today, because tomorrow their contract that they currently got is over. And it ends today, so. It's just, it's just been unbelievable.
Right here, um, I, I see the question and answers back and forth on the emails, and, yeah, they're really pursuing that.
Yeah, and.
It looks like everything.
According to the attorney in, Rob Cusack, one of the Scott County attorneys, he was on our call yesterday, too. And Miranda had sent him all the materials that she's been sending to Southeast Community College. And now she sent it to Jim Miller, too. And, and the I Workforce Development Attorney that I talked with, with Mike Witt, all of them said, we followed the procedures exactly the way they needed to be. So they don't know exactly what Southeast Community College's problem is, other than the fact that they did not get the adult and dislocated worker contract that went to Rust. And they're still not happy about that, but it is what it is. And so I'm hoping by this Thursday.
That was an RFP or a bid process?
Yeah, yeah. And we had a committee that reviewed the applications and scored them. And Rest Care came out ahead, only by one point, but it was ahead. And their application was, I guess you'd say more futuristic. It was looking to the future. And the other application was just basically same old, same business as usual. And the review committee said they really liked some of the potential things that Rest Care was looking at promoting, and they thought it was something that would fit the needs better than just doing it like we always did it. And it is a, it is an era of change.
It sure is.
Yes, it is.
So we felt that.
We're all going to be one region here. One region, we're going to be Iowa.
So. Other than that, last week, I did go down, and you were there, you and Marty had been there.
Oh, we did, we went down to Head Start, yeah, yeah.
And Jane was very impressed with the building. She thought everything was, was A-OK, except for the things that they've already asked to have changed. And did she and, and say anything to you about the cost share of the flooring? Has she heard anything more? She, they, they still do not have the contract for Head Start. But she said it should be hopefully handled, so.
We gave an approximate, said twenty, we thought twenty thousand would cover it. Obviously, there is a tremendous amount of things, stuff inside the building. And we advise them that they should be looking for a pod or something, that when the flooring has to be removed and relit, they're going to need to put all of that stuff somewhere. I don't even know if a semi trailer, would they be getting all the semi, there's a lot of stuff.
What's in the red barn?
Outside toys and such, is that the one that Marty's been working on? It's just outside the.
The fairground.
Oh, that, I don't know, I don't know.
I wonder if they, if that would be usable.
Yeah, I don't know. But when we took Jane down there and we talked about different things, she said, do you think twenty thousand will cover it? And, you know, I'm no flooring contractor, but based on what we knew for the removal.
And the rest of it's.
Right, yeah. She said that, same thing as you, is that they hadn't received the, the contract yet that they were going to be doing it. But she did feel that there was several funding to, to pay for it. And I said, you know what, we need to keep moving on this with school, no.
So did we decide if we could cover it or no?
Well, we had that discussion also. And said, you know, we could just relay over it, and she didn't indicate one way or the other, what they're.
I mean, obviously, they're thinking some type of hard material, correct? Like a laminate or? Not carpet, right, or not?
No, it's not carpeting, they want all the carpeting pulled up.
They got tile in there now and a.
Partly tile and there's some carpet.
That's correct. And so where there is carpet, they still, they want to take that off also.
But we have to remember that we extended the lease, or New View extended the lease.
Till the end of.
For a head start till October first, so we, we extended it. And Laura will have to sign that, yeah. But we have to negotiate a new lease. And if, if, if we end up having to pay for the whole thing, then we're going to have to negotiate our lease higher.
Yeah, which we don't have budgeted.
Yeah, you know, yeah. We've been doing part of that rent as in kind for the Head Start program. And so we're going to, there's some things we're going to have to think about.
Yeah, so instead of the federal government paying the twenty thousand, we are.
We hope that doesn't happen.
That's right, so that's why I said time is of the essence here, keep working on this, because obviously, there's no children in the building, so.
Yeah, that's huge, too.
That is.
You had to displace the whole school thing to somewhere else, that's a huge, I mean, nightmare.
Okay, well, we appreciate you still working on that.
Better news, we talked about that dock at Ridgeport and some of that. They're actually drawing up plans. DNR has hired an architect out of Des Moines for all the river trails, for all the boat docks all the way down the river.
Will that be at Joiner Field, too?
Yes.
Out there? Oh, my uncle's been so upset that there's not a place. Oh, my uncle's been so upset that there's a place or in the Hormona with his boat in.
So the DNR is gonna fund it?
The funding that would go to some kind of different grants, but they need the whole plan first and I, I talked to Dan Fox with ECIA and this was all supposed to be happening this spring. And he just kind of dropped the ball because of the COVID thing, because they're supposed to have open meetings and, you know, input sessions and stuff like that. It says, hey, we need to get this going. I mean, some of the funds are there, I believe, but it has to be done by the end of twenty one, the end of the year in twenty one. But he said they won't have it ready until the end of the year and then it should all happen next year. I did talk to Nathan and with it on our agenda, we're gonna talk to a contractor or two about going down the bridge or with an excavator and, and cleaning that up a little bit, so you, you're not standing on pointed rocks and everything else, just for safety sake.
Standing on them fishing the other day.
But yeah, there's over four, you know, four hundred people on a weekend getting out of that dock. I mean, it's
Yeah, it's tough getting into that if you're coming downstream.
Not to be thorn in everybody's side, but Kevin says, you know what, most of these people are looking for when they get out of the river, it's a place to go camp. I mean, we're really short in that county, we should be leaning towards that again too, so. And while there's extra money floating around with all this other stuff going on, but it seems like our campgrounds are, are full, I mean, completely full, even more so than they were before. People are just getting out, they can do their little group thing in their campsite and it's just something to do.
So have you received any more calls? I did. What about our drill project? Have you had a chance to talk to anybody else yet or have we made a decision?
Talk to is Gary Convy and he feels that it's a terrible time because of the tax thing and everything like that. And after looking at what I told you about, how much money he's taken in, I don't think it's a concern of his, so. And it's, and he says, yeah, we need it, so we need it, let's do it, is my opinion. And if we can get it done ahead of the everybody else, everybody else is waiting to see what's gonna happen and it's gonna go crazy. If we can get ahead of the game on this and get things done and get going. I appreciate Lisa for your concern. I don't know why there's some way they can't change that date. I mean, it's just on a piece of paper, it's on a piece of paper somewhere. And why they can't change it to a week later or something.
It said in Iowa law.
Oh, it said in the law.
Oh, yeah, it said in Iowa law, absolutely, yeah. And we will do what we want us to do. I just wanted you to be aware that it's not only. Yeah, I just know that the election is September, yeah. So I guess that would be my question.
So tell me this, Larry, if it does not pass in September, if we have the vote, are you willing to do it again in March? I think we should wait till March. I think we need to promote this thing. I need, we need to, we need to market it. We need to get out there and get everybody on board, but that's just my opinion.
Well, I always wanted it in September, but after a lot of people I talked to and with the upcoming election and all of that, I think it should be March. I don't like that, but I think that's what we should do.
I think it's gonna cost us more money in March.
I, I can't say that. I, I don't know that inflation's gonna go up. I don't know, I, I'm, I'm a hundred, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I'm pretty sure your bonding is not gonna change, so I think they halted that even until end of twenty one. The feds.
I had not spoke to our bonding.
Yeah, I, I think the feds would stop and rise in interest rates for.
If I had a crystal ball that would say it would pass in September, I'd be all for it.
I would too.
I just think it will. I really do. I mean, we only missed it by a hundred votes and what we've done since then, we've been a beautiful site.
I agree with you, but I also, I'm, I'm concerned about even, even with the information you told us this morning, what the farming rural, rural community is gonna think because of what's going on with the COVID virus. I, I, I just don't know that they would support it.
I think we lost some votes, honestly, since then because of this whole, this whole thing. You know, it was tough on everybody, it really was and I, I'd sure like to know the next time we do it that we're all on board and, and ready to roll, but I don't think we can market it from here to September. We got July and August, you got two months.
This situation is just like to be an analytical candidate. We have no, you can't get out and talk to people really because of COVID.
I mean, no, no one's gonna come.
I mean, yeah, to go to.
Now, if we were on the beach and selling.
Maybe we should do that. Maybe we should go to the fairground, eh? Cabana bar.
But they canceled the fair now and we canceled, I don't know, we canceled all of the historical society activities, except maybe we might have the heritage dinner in November, but all of our activities up till then is, is canceled. And it's like I said last night when we were going through all of these changes that Southeast Community College wants, I said, you know, it's really hard to have a good discussion when you're all looking at a screen, you don't see anybody else, you don't have an opportunity interreact. And I said, I really wish when we have to come down to making the final decision as to what we're gonna do and how we're gonna respond to all of this stuff from CSS or SCC that, that we could at least be able to discuss it person to person. Well, we're not gonna do it, so.
Anything else before the board?
I would move adjourn.
A motion of second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay. Motion carries, meeting adjourned. Thank you all and have a safe and happy holiday weekend.